Twenty twenty four to eleven AM. No matter what that clock says, it's eleven AM. If you'll please stand for pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, the other not, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Be seated. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. If there's any changes, please let me know.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. The agenda is approved as as presented. There's. Uh, the main, the reason we're here today is for the consideration of the new construction for the Allegheny High School. Under section A, uh, this is for information only. Uh, if there's any comments or questions from the board, uh, we need to go ahead and hear those now. And, uh, I'll, I'll open up the floor to anybody who wishes to say anything or ask anything. Hearing none and seeing no movement, we'll counsel, we'll close out section A. Moving right along, general business, this is for action. Allegheny County High School, new construction, considerations of funding. And with that being said, uh, what we've talked about as a board is how we can proceed with funding the project that my feeling, every member of this board wants to see the project move ahead as quickly as possible. We know that the, uh, through the state lottery money, there's fifty nine million dollars uh, set aside for Allegheny High School's, uh, new building. Of that, the way that I understand it right now, forty seven million of that allotment is sitting in the state treasures. Uh, coffers, uh, we'll defer a little bit more and let April explain how the funding occurs, uh, the process that we're, we're governed to go by by the state of North Carolina. I'd also like to, uh, thank the Board of Education for the continuing discussions that we've had here in the past few weeks. We had a very good discussion yesterday. I was well pleased when that conversation was over. And I would hope that we could have those maybe on a regular basis every two or three weeks, whatever, or if it's needed, needed sooner to keep both parties informed as to what's going on and how, how we're making progress. So with that being said, I will go to Mr. Carter and let, uh, if April needs to start, that would be a good place, whatever you all desire.
Chairman, I, I think, uh, before April, uh, talks about the LGC process, I think it would be beneficial for, uh, identify the amount of funds the county is, is, uh, able to provide for the project because the information that April will provide regarding the LGC would be in addition to the amount of funds the county board has, uh, decided to place towards the project.
Okay. I think that, uh, what we're with the board, it's, it's my understanding the board is looking at putting up one point five million in cash. And there's the possibility of other funds being used. But I believe the, that we're looking at today is that figure of one point five million, which would put the budget, construction budget at, uh, sixty and a half million, give or take a few dollars either way.
And with that, uh, that is a, that is an availability now. That's cash. If, if you want April to explain the LGC process that the county is under, then that would be any additional funds that may come as a result of a borrowing or some type of other, issuance for, for additional funds. And I think you have a question down there.
John, go ahead.
I, the question that I have. Now, we are gonna have to front these funds, am I not correct? Whenever the construction starts and the county has presented a bill as an example of two million dollars, how long would it take us to be reimbursed from those, for those funds?
I don't anticipate that to be a long period. I don't, I don't think it'll be thirty days. I think it'll be less than thirty days. But the possibility of the county fronting those, those monies is real. It could happen. And, and the way that that would happen is if those invoices and those, you know, expenditures happened to come in with our billing process differently, we would basically reimburse ourselves. So it would be a floating fund, basically. You're out, of course, the initial, but you're putting that out front, but it's all reimbursable at that point.
Do we have those funds available or would we have to borrow the funds going through the LGC process, sir?
The schedule that was provided basically amounts to just over two million dollars per month for the calendar year of twenty five. For, and if you, if you average that out, as long as the reimbursements come in in a timely fashion, there should not be a problem with fronting and then the county being reimbursed those funds back. If there is an issue, um, if, if it lags, you know, a month or a month and a half or something of that nature, and suddenly you've got two months' worth of fronting monies, then you're getting into a, a situation. I don't expect that. I don't think that, that Raleigh works that way, but you are capable without borrowing money to front the funds that have been projected monthly.
Are you taking into consideration the funds that we are gonna have to pay for the new transfer station?
New transfer station would be a totally different obligation from the general fund, but yes, I have calculated that in.
Other questions I have concerning this matter, Mr. Chair?
Any, any other questions?
Let, may I add?
Go ahead.
Keep in mind that the monies that we are talking about, that is one calendar year. This project will span longer than one, one calendar year. The numbers that were presented are a reflection of the bid total at that time. It is probably and likely that that bid number will change because I believe tomorrow is the original date of the extension of the bid for the amount. It is my understanding through communication yesterday that the contractor is willing to stay with the project, but there is a possibility and or likelihood that the cost could go up based upon the cost of materials or supplies or whatever that is. So you ask if we can front that money, just know that what I have answered is correct. However, what I wanna point out is that is a reflection of that contract price. That is not a, a reflection of what the chairman just identified as sixty and a half million. That is for the total project cost you only have one calendar year to count for. Now, there is one month on that schedule. And they vary. I mean, they're, they're gonna be, there's gonna be months that are, you know, higher. There's gonna be months that are lower. If I could find that schedule, I could really talk about it. But I believe there is one month that it exceeds. Thank you. And you have to give me a minute for my eyes to focus because this is about like four font, but, looks like in October and November and December of twenty five, you go from roughly a million eight average up to about three point two. So, as everyone is aware, the county's most productive revenue gener- generating month is August. It bleeds over a little into September. So what that means is your, your later months, like your, on this schedule, your March, your April and your May, they're somewhere in the million and a half range. That's, that's doable. The October, November, December, based upon your receipt of revenues in August, although that is a higher number, I still believe you can float that money off the schedule.
Chair, I have a further question if I may. It's my understa- now, the figures that we are talking about, is that the original figures or after the reduction?
Well, I, the note on this says it was delivered to Heather Klein on eight fifteen twenty four. So I would have to imagine that that is after, and the school board is here and someone can certainly, if we wanna recognize them, identify. But I believe this calculation is based upon the reduced number as opposed to the original bid number. And I'm looking at Sid and he looks pretty calm, but I, is that correct, Sid? So it's based upon the reduced number?
My understanding from conversation with you that the letter that reduced the amount was taken into consideration waiver of fees from both Town of Sparta and the county. Is that correct?
The, the handout that was provided from the contractor identifies, it says some various reductions. If you go to the second page of it, it talks about nine additional, um, avenues to look at reducing and, and factoring that in. There are two on there that, that could impact the county and or town. Number three identifies tap and impact fees, which I believe would be town oriented. And number four identifies building permit fees waived. So to get to this calculated number and the, the revised, according to this, the revised base bid with all of these reductions, including those two that I just identified, is sixty six million eight forty nine six twenty. So when we had a discussion with, with members of the school board, those numbers were factored in to this equation. Now, I know that, that we've talked about our building permit fees being somewhere just shy of half a million dollars. I do not know what the tap or impact fees, I don't know what they equate to. But to answer your question, number three, it probably impacts the town as opposed to the county.
So if those fees, if we do not waive the fees for the inspection and the transfer dumping fees,
It increases that number.
Would increase that number?
By the equivalent amount. Yes, sir.
Have additional comments, but I will wait until we start the consideration of funding, sir.
Hold anything?
Not, not at this moment.
Missing something on this? He said waiving the landfill fees, but that's not on this list, is it?
It, it's not factored. That, the, the waste fees is not calculated on these reductions.
That's what I thought.
Which would tell you that they're factored into the bid total.
Correct.
And I provided to the board the second page, which is some of my notes from the previous meeting. And Mr. Carter asked me to come up with amortization schedules with that seven point eight million dollar that's represented on that. So that's what I just passed out to the board, that he was reviewing just on the second page. That represents the amount that Jane Cope had represented with the accepted value management reduction in that. And then just my notes about the building permits being waived. It's not in that amount.
Okay. Any, any follow up questions, comments? Will we move to April or do you have any additional?
Uh, I, I think it would be very informative if the board fully understands the LGC process before making any considerations. So that, that is why I've asked April to present to the board information regarding the LGC process.
So I have been in touch with the LGC and we've had several conversations. Um, LGC, just for the public's information, I know I've been asked this a lot, local government commission. And that is the oversight over counties and municipalities in North Carolina. There is a process, um, an application process that you have to go through with the LGC. And this has nothing to do with past UAL list, on the watch list, as we call it, has nothing to do with that. It's the amount of the money being considered being borrowed and the amount of time that would need to, to pay that money back. So, um, in a phone call yesterday with them, they provided some, some paperwork. And I actually do have the application now. The RFP, that there's several steps to this. Um, the contract would need to be signed. The contract needs to be, there needs to be a public hearing about the contract and the governing board does need to approve the contract. In that contract, there needs to be a line, um, contingent on funding availability in that contract. And that all will go to the LGC, that contract will. Um, there needs to be other public hearings about even just the funding. There has to be a resolution done by the board to create a project, special project. Um, we'll have to create another fund, which is, we can do that within our capabilities of our finance software. Um, there could be a preliminary conference, um, that is up to the North Carolina Treasurer's Office. And since we have been on the UAL five years ago, that list, they may, um, require the local government to have a conference with them before any of this process starts. The RFP process would be the next step. And that would be going out to financial institutions, finding the best rate, the best terms for this project. Um, after all of that is done and a few other things, there's a fee arrangement letter. There's public hearing notices and minutes and affidavits that have to be, uh, included. The cost of the project and the permits, attorney's opinions, sworn statements of our debt, which is one of the considerations with this application. Fee arrangement letters. And then it goes to the, the secretary. And after the secretary has notified the unit of the local government that the application has been accepted for submission to the commission, then the application and supporting documents will be considered and either approved or disapproved by the local government commission. I, I gave the board, I believe, a couple of meetings ago, a ninety day timeline. It's probably gonna be more like a four month timeline. They meet once a month. The first thing, one of the first things they have to have from us is an up to date audit. Well, we're in the middle of the audit process now. We're probably not gonna get the audit till mid-November, maybe even late November, is usually when that's presented to us as a draft and then we go through and read and. So that means December submitting the audit, January submitting the application. They would meet in February in a perfect world. That's kinda what we're talking about with timelines. This, this is not an easy process, but it's something we will have to do if the board considers funding because it's over that five hundred thousand and it's probably gonna be over that five year span. And this is something that all counties and municipalities are under this guideline. So can I a- a- answer any questions for you?
Any ques- uh, John, wherever you spoke, you said that the contracts that are involved with this have to be included, correct?
That is correct. That is part of the documentation that has to go to the LGC with the application.
This committee would have access to those contracts to review.
I actually sent them a follow up question today because we talked a lot about the contracts in a previous meeting. And the construction contract will need to go to the governing board for approval. So that, and if, if I'm wrong with stating that this is the governing board of this contract, somebody please step in and so.
We hold the checkbook. That, in my life, whoever holds the checkbook is the governing board.
I, I do have an answer to that question from the State Treasurer's Office. Along with the contract for funding and everything else that goes along with the application, will come to this board for approval.
The construction contract.
Yes.
Also involved with that would be the architecture, the architect, the plans?
We're just talking about the construction at this point.
Okay.
I, I have not asked that question. So I can't fully answer that this morning, but I can if, if need be.
The DPI review, I think, would certify those plans. So I, I don't think that there would be a requirement for that. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions now? Go ahead, Timmy.
So you're saying that the state requires a contractor to bid on and sign a contract and wait four months for approval? So that's what the state's telling them?
At, at this point.
Borrow money, yeah.
To borrow money, yes. It's gonna be a four month process. That is correct. And they, they know what type of project I'm talking about. I, I have talked to him several times. They know it's a high school project. They know it's being funded mostly with lottery money. They have all the details of this project.
It's because of the amount that you're borrowing. That, that's what triggers all that.
Yeah, and I guess the reason I ask that is I think about it as a contractor's point of view is on a contract and they can't do anything for four months. How, where's that number gonna be in four months from now? A little odd, I guess, to say, but I guess if that's the way they do it, that's the way they do it.
Have to basically inflate the number to account for that.
For the four months.
And then if there is any, any overrun or additional monies at the end. I mean, you can turn that and hopefully have a, and that all depends on the financial institution in which you borrow from. But, you know, the opportunity to, to, you know, basically pay that money down, pay it, you know, you can remove the interest. Certain things can happen, but it, there, there will be an inflationary number to that if this board decides to go that route. There's no other option.
Any additional comments or questions at this point? Go ahead, April.
Well, at this point, I guess, what questions do you have? That, that's the process with the LGC. If, if, if the board wants to move forward with, with that type of loan, that is the process.
And I think you, what was the, your best guesstimate at the timeline that this process would be finished?
Well, I had informed the board, I believe, a couple of meetings ago about ninety days. I really think it'll be more like four months. And talking with them, I, I have two ladies that I have been talking with at the North Carolina Treasurer's Office, and they agree with that timeline. Due to the audit, you know, we're, we, we have an approved audit for fiscal year twenty three. We're in the process of getting an audit for fiscal year twenty four, but we don't have those final numbers yet. But that is the first review that the Treasurer's Office and LGC will want to see.
Carter?
Keep in mind, we, we are at the end of August. April identified that you will likely, key word, get your twenty four audit in November. You've got September, October, November, because you at best get it at the mid month, correct?
That's correct.
So there,
That would be correct.
There's two and a half months before you get your audit. So you have two and a half months of twiddling your fingers. And then once the audit is, is received, April, what is the timeframe after that?
For submission to the state.
Yeah, all, all the process, once we get the audit.
Once we have a final audit that everybody has signed off on and agreed, we can submit that at that point. But it probably will be that first deadline in December. LGC has a deadline each month and it's usually around the fifth and sixth of each month. And then they meet the next month. And they do meet once a month. I don't know if I informed the board of that.
So when you get the audit, is it gonna be four months from there?
I'm getting, that's what I'm, no, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah. What, what, how long after the, the receipt of the audit does the process take estimated?
You're, you're correct. It's gonna take three months.
So that's five and a half months, not four months, not ninety days.
That's correct.
That's five and a half months to answer Commissioner Evans' question, that that contractor may just be there.
I think it's important, like what we're talking about, to have that information. And if somebody's bidding on it, they know that. You know, this is what they got to work with.
Go ahead.
Any other questions I can answer?
No. Cheryl?
This is all if we have to borrow money.
That's correct.
Okay. There, there seems to be some misconceptions in the community about millions of dollars sitting in a savings account. about millions of dollars sitting in a savings account. I mean, I know that that's earmarked for other projects, correct?
That is correct, and the numbers that I present to the board every month are today numbers. And what has been requested to present to the board is our actual cash that we have and the actual fund balance. Now, in the real world, there's something called state stabilization, and it's a calculation that the state does, and it's in our audit. And those are restricted funds. There's a calculation that we can't use. So really, our fund balance taking away the state stabilization and those restricted amounts is around eleven million. But our budget is an approved twenty-one point four million, just the general fund. We're responsible for over thirty million, and that's counting Fire Tax and Enterprise Fund. That's our transfer facility, opioid funds. All of that, that we're responsible for, is part of that sitting in that savings account. You know, the county is receiving opioid funds right now, and the Health Department has that availability to use those funds for programs in our community. That's part of what's sitting in our savings account. Does that help answer your question?
So the one point five million is really what we have available in that account? That's not earmarked for opioid funds or other projects?
The county manager has represented what he is comfortable taking out of our available fund balance that's not restricted to go toward this project.
Any other follow-up? Go ahead, Ms. Carter.
I just wanna add to that. So, in the report that April provides each month, she also identifies the audited twenty-three fund balance number. And I don't have it memorized, but it's just shy of thirteen million dollars.
That's correct. It's like twelve point nine three.
So, keep in mind that the report that you get each month is a snapshot of that day. And that is a snapshot of that day from a year ago and two years ago. It does look like there is twenty-three million dollars laying there. And I asked April yesterday, I said, can I go across the road, go in the bank, flash my ID card, and ask them if I could lay down in twenty-three million dollars? Because I've never seen twenty-three million dollars. And after I explained it to her a couple of times, she said, yeah, you can go over and lay down in it. But what my point was, is that money is money that the county has to operate on for the entire remaining portion of the fiscal year. So, on that report, she always talks about your net versus, and that's your revenues versus your expenditures. And I believe on the last report that I saw, there was actually a negative, like a million dollars on that thing.
That's correct. For the month of July, that's correct.
So...
We had more going out than coming in.
You had a deficit for that one month on that report. Now, that money came out of your balance. As you continue through the year, you're gonna get additional revenues in. It's not like they're stopped, but they will slow down. What will pick up are your expenditures. So by the time you get to, you know, May, June, your last quarter of the year, that's when things typically start getting a little tight. And when you look at what your net is for like June third year or something of that nature, you're not gonna see that twenty-three million dollars. You're gonna see a number likely, hopefully, and a lot of other descriptive words, in the million to two-million-dollar range, which will then, after you ask go through, she identified the state's stabilization rate. And they can do that, and it's, since I've been here, it's fluctuated from eight hundred thousand dollars to over a million dollars. So it's just, you know, some twelve-clock calculus formula that they've got out there that they apply to this thing. So you may end up netting, you know, a million dollars or something of that nature. And then, when that number is presented, that will be your base number moving forward. So I guess what I'm saying is everyone knows your taxes. Most of your taxes come in the month of August. Your number's gonna look sweet, you're gonna look really good, but you gotta look really good for the remainder of the year. And that's why I say that million and a half, it would not disrupt operations out of your fund balance.
Questions, comments? April, you have more?
I mean, is there any other questions from the board about the finances or the process? Or, I do think it'll be a two-to-three-week turnaround with the reimbursements. It is a reimbursement. The forty-seven million is sitting at the Treasurer's Office in our so-called account. It's not gaining any interest. That's not allowable. So, I haven't seen anything of the twelve million yet, also sitting there in that portal. But there is a process to go through that. Invoices have to be uploaded, approved by DPI. Then the funds are released for that amount of that, and then a wire is done to us. And usually with lottery money, it's a couple-of-week turnaround. Now, we will have to have signatures from both chairs with that paperwork that we do once a year now with lottery funds, but that'll have to be done every time we upload something, is my understanding.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm not sure, I know in the past the board has had some questions about change orders. And I wasn't really up to speed on how a change order occurred. And after our discussion yesterday, I think I understand that process a lot better. The, if I may say what I think happens in a change order is, there's a contingency fund built into the bid. And that contingency fund can be used to do change orders. And that is just up to the, I guess, contractors in the school board to approve or not approve those change orders. What concerned me is what happens when the contingency fund, if it is ever spent entirely, then who's responsible if there are additional change orders? And Heather, if you would help me out, did I explain it pretty accurately?
I think so, and there may be something in the contract which might refer to change orders and how they might be handled. I haven't seen the contract, so I can't say for sure, but that would typically be something that you would contract with a contractor for to determine how that will be handled. So I think it probably would be in there. I don't think that would be something that would be missing, where it would be a surprise later on, that now you have to renegotiate for something along those lines. So I think it's all gonna depend on the construction process, but I think that's something that will be addressed, and you'll be able to review that, because I think you're the board that will end up signing off on that. So you'll see it. We'll have a chance to review it.
Ultimately, I guess, the county commissioners are the funding entity in this. So if it did go over the contingency fund, that comes back to us that we have to prove it? Or we just have to write a check?
That's gonna be determined by multiple factors, you know? How much money is in the contingency, and if there's none left? And then additionally, if you're, if there's a borrowing situation, and how much you've borrowed, and if you've taken into consideration anything that would be a change order, so you may borrow more, and then that money would be available if there was a change, but I'm sure it's coming back to the board for consideration, you know? Because you may have approved the money, but you haven't approved something that might change or alter what's contracted for.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I think, I think what I would say in relation to change orders is, it's clearly identified that the school board, they will review and, you know, discuss and negotiate and ultimately approve. Like Heather, I, you know, we don't know what the number for contingencies are in the bid. But I think this board has to have faith and trust in those of the school board that are doing these reviews and doing these discussions. And, I mean, they're gonna know how much money they've got to work with. And, you know, I have to believe, if they know what money they've got to work with, then they're gonna be very, you know, aware of that funding and make the appropriate decisions to keep those change orders within that contingency money. And it's nice to think that there won't be any. I hope there's not any. There probably will be, based upon the size. The bigger question is, to me, is if there, if there's, and I'm just using rough numbers, if there's a half a million dollars in the contingency, and you don't use it, where does the contingency money go? And that's something that the contract identifies. I don't know. But I just think you need to have faith in those that are doing that review, that they know the number that they got to work with, and, you know, here it is.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Is, so, I think, John has asked, or the board would like to see the contract that's been presented to the construction company, is that correct?
Yes.
And if there's a contract, what else, the architect?
Architect also.
So, we could ask for those?
Prior to the meeting, I presented a FOIA request to the Ms. Weaver, requesting those documents. So that is under a FOIA request.
Think out of the meeting that we had yesterday, talking about the funding, the one thing that really came to light is, I was glad to see that this J.M. Cope would stay with the school system for a period of time, extended period of time. What concerned me was, though, that they have the option, I think, to increase the bid based on, I don't know if it's a weekly, monthly, or end of their agreement to stay with us. And past comments, a lot of people have said construction costs are gonna keep going higher and higher and higher. So I can't guess what they are going to come up with the final number. You know, that's something that I don't know that anybody at this time, you know, can foresee. And I think that goes to Mr. Carter's point, that we may have to borrow more money than what's asked for in this current bid from them. That just brings to my mind, would this be a time to look at rebidding the project? Because we're looking at a possible, an extended amount of a contract coming from this current board, I mean, coming from the current contractor. I'm just asking that question. Is it, are we being prudent to the taxpayers of the county? Are we doing the right thing? I don't know what the timeline, I've got no idea what the cost would be, you know, to rebid the project and possibly redesign the project? That's a question. I just wanna do the right thing, but this time period that we're under constraints from the state government, that bothers me. But that's the governance. We're not a private institution where we can just write a check if we want to. We've gotta follow these sometimes procedures that we may not all agree upon. So, I just ask that question about looking at the possibility of a rebid, looking at the possibility of redesign. That's, like I say, that's just a question on my part. Any other comments or questions?
I will tell you this, Mr. Chair. With the emails and conversations that I've had in the grocery store, on the street, the one thing that comes out is that they are, a general feeling from these people, granted, it's a small group, that they are concerned that there was only one bid. They don't feel that that is proper competition. They don't understand the process, but this is the concern that they are raising. It was pointed out to me in an email yesterday from an individual in Piney Creek. They have a large number of retirees that live on fixed incomes. And the prospect of tax increases because of a project where there was only one bid does not go over well. So this is something that's out there. I believe we need to look at it. It's my understanding, the Board of Education is not amiable to that. They do not wanna rebid. At the last commissioner's meeting, I asked for a consensus that the county require three bids. That did not go for a second, so we have acquiesced to this and be what it may.
Cheryl?
My understanding of, I mean, the bid process is that we didn't get more bids because we didn't use the at-risk, is that, am I using the right term? The at-risk bidding process? What would happen if we went back and did the at-risk? Is it gonna increase the prices dramatically, or?
I feel like it would.
Any other questions or comments, Timmy? Any other comments?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair. Are we now discussing the financial considerations?
We'll be...
Have we moved into that arena and be?
If there are no additional questions, then we will be there, yes.
Okay. We haven't gotten there yet.
Somebody's got anything else to say?
Any other comments or questions? So, going back to the agenda, we are at Section B for action. Allegheny High School, new construction, considerations of funding.
I'll kick it off. One of the things, to me, we're basically down into two to three areas. Consideration of waiving the tipping fees. Now, I would recommend that this board not waive the tipping fees because we've just purchased a item of equipment. we've just purchased a item of equipment that, what was the amount on that, Mr. Chair? That figure escapes me for the new caterpillar.
Shy, three hundred thousand dollars.
This is an enterprise fund. It's supposed to be self-supporting. It isn't, correct me?
No, I just, I just wanna correct you. You, you started the conversation about tipping fees.
Right.
Tipping fees are not an enterprise fund.
What I call tipping fees, well, anyway, this is a part of the county government that's supposed to be self-supporting.
Waste disposal fee.
Waste disposal, thank you. Gotta get the terminology right. So we have, we have purchased an item of equipment out of that fund. That's a three hundred thousand, around in there. We can only guesstimate how much we are gonna pay to go into the landfill with this material that's gonna come in. Now, anything of value's coming out. If we would remember, whenever we get a brief from David Spicer, he tells us how much money he gets for scrap metal. We aren't gonna have that available. So this is gonna be true money that's gonna be coming out of that fund, correct?
Is, there was an estimate provided that identified the removal of, of whatever materials and a final calculation of what the estimated tonnage for the project was, which was somewhere, I think, around fifteen hundred and thirty-some tons. If you, if you do the quick math, that equates to about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If that number's correct, then you're talking about consideration of waiving around a hundred and fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars of tipping fees.
If that fund starts to go into negative balance, where does the money come from to pay the bills?
The general fund, and you-
Out of the general funds.
You, you have a balance in that fund that that loader is eating a big portion of. If you're talking about an additional hundred-plus thousand dollars coming out of there, you'd about clean that fund out.
That is an estimate. It's a swag.
So what that means for next year is you're not gonna have any money for any capital improvements if you wipe that fund out because the monies that you're using in the budget are actual numbers that have to be associated with that operation.
So you are telling me that that affects the new transfer station?
The new transfer station is going to be funded by the general fund also. You, you're going to, you're gonna do it one of two ways. You're gonna take it straight out of the general fund or you're gonna transfer that funding into the enterprise fund to make that work. But you, but that's, that's a million and a half plus dollars right there also.
I've had people come to me and say, "Why do we, why are we building the new transfer station?" Would you educate the public on what's going on over there with that tipping floor, please?
Um, I'm, I'm sure that everyone has been to that facility. And I have to say perhaps, because I wasn't here when it was constructed, but perhaps when it was constructed, it was, it was okay and everything was fine. I'm assuming that it was constructed sometime in the ninety-four range because the Subtitle D landfill requirements came out October ninety-three and that's when localities decided whether or not they could continue to operate a landfill or not. By having a transfer station, obviously Allegheny County decided it couldn't operate a landfill, it built a transfer station. So from ninety-four until today, it's several years worth of beat, bang, and rough and tough. Floor in that facility, as everyone knows it's been there, is actually metal. And I wanna first point out that the guys that work there have done a tremendous job to, to make that facility a much better facility. But there's only so much they can do. Floor is in, in disrepair. It gets, it gets welded on, you know, a lot. Floor underneath it is supposed to be a concrete slab, which I understand has various cracks, et cetera, in it. There's a gap between the floor and the ground surface if you go down below and look. There are demonstrations of the chute that have been basically torn out over the years. There's no loading chute. It's basically a drop point. The cinder block walls that make up the outside of the building are cracked and leaning. The facility actually has wooden rafters in it, which over time have been torn and beaten and repaired. The push walls in the facility are about gone. The rebar's showing through those. It is obviously not sized for the amount of waste that comes into the facility now. And I can keep going if I need to.
I believe you've demonstrated enough reasons why we have to do that. The reason why I'm bringing this up, this is a requirement for local government. It's just like law enforcement. We've gotta deal with the refuges there, and it's gonna cost us to redo this, and that's depleting our funds. Now, I do not believe that we should waive the fees for that material because it's a, it's a swag. It's a guess. We really don't know. And I just don't feel comfortable with that whenever we run the possibility of further reducing our general funds.
The only way that you could maintain some type of control over that would be to set a cap on the tipping fee disposal or the waste disposal cost. You could, you could set a cap, and you've done that in the past, up to X amount. You know, the county will take and absorb. Anything over that becomes the obligation of those hauling in. But that's the only way you could, if, if, if you're questioning the numbers and if you're concerned about the unknown, the only way you can do that, if you consider waiving the waste disposal fee, would be to set a cap on it.
Mr. Chair, I, I believe that we should get the feeling of the board on that.
Is there any comment from, uh, Michelle?
Well, I think that we should waive the fees with a cap, and we should waive the inspection fees.
Timmy?
I, I think we should, you know, we go with the one point five million and, and then plus a waive the inspection fees after talking to Travis. And we need to move along with this LGC. I know that's going to delay. And, you know, I'd leave it up to the Board of Education. If they feel like this, sitting on this will create a increase astronomically by the week, by the month for the current contractor, if they feel like it's at their best interest to put it out for bids. But that's up to them, but, um, that's my thoughts. The waste landfill thing, um, only concerns I had was when David said we can't handle that much and the, the amount that's given to us, it sounds like we can. But like Michael said, I think if that's a consideration, we'll have to put a cap on it. And it's, I would be fine with that also if we could come up with that cap. But that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Go ahead.
If I'm mistaken, there's some, one meeting we had, somebody said they wanted to have a place to dump the stuff from the school. So that, that, I don't know how much of it. I think Scott Smith and somebody did.
They're willing to take as much as they're allowed to take. So that will really affect-
That's a hell of a bunch. I'd agree, give them the one point five million, get a low interest loan, and get it rolling.
Any additional discuss-
I believe, I believe if we set a cap, since they have a place to, for this material to go, we would be safe in case, if we put a cap, we'd be safe in, in case they fill up that one area and they need to start moving it into the landfill. I think that would be good. And since we brought it up, as far as waiving the permit fees, that would bring the county county to about two million dollars in the kitty. So, I, I would also support waiver, waiving the inspection fees. But would recommend that we place a cap on the transfer.
And that cap would be at a hundred and fifteen thousand?
Oh. What would the cap be, Mr.? What would you feel?
I know that, that we're, we're getting into an interaction-type meeting, but Sid had brought up, I hate to pick on Sid, but I owe Sid, he, he picked on me a couple times. But the, the amount that is calculated, fifteen hundred and some odd tons, does that include the other debris going somewhere else?
I do not know that. Uh, that's left up to the DMO contractor. If I was doing it, I would separate it, but now, that may not mean anything to them, and it may, it may come. I know they can't dump all that at the other side. I wouldn't imagine. It would just be concrete debris and clean debris.
Inert material.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, uh-
And, and that was just my question when that was brought up, but if, and again, that's an estimate, okay? If you're looking at me for a, a suggestion, I would set the cap at an even hundred thousand dollars.
Chair, make a motion.
But, but ju- just a minute before we make a motion, I, I wanna understand. I thought that we were looking at voting on the cash that we were going to offer. Now, are we rolling this into the motion that may come up?
You have different options under this consideration of funding. One is the amount of cash, as you just indicated. You also have the ability to waive inspection fees, which would take a separate vote. You also have the ability to waive any type of waste disposal fees, which would take a separate vote. So, you have the opportunity to have three different motions based upon the abilities that the county has.
Everybody understand it. Michelle, go ahead.
I have one question. Looks like we're headed down a road here of, um, we all know the direction we're going. Likely that prices are gonna increase. Is there any other pathway to getting this done and being able to sign a contract tomorrow? I thought.
What did I know of? Uh, well, let me take that back. You have before you, I think April passed out a sheet that has the, at that time, the contract price and the difference that would make the county's contribution equate to that contract price. When you say tomorrow, you know, that's, that's twenty-four hours from now. If, if you were to say that, you know what, we're just gonna, we're just gonna give you the whole amount today, and here's a check, and getting all that stuff done, I, I don't know that you could do that in a twenty-four-hour cycle, maybe. But you've gotta remember that the money you hand out today is the money you're gonna need come February, March, April, May, June. So unless you have something that happens catastrophically in this county that brings in that additional tax revenue, you know, you're gonna get another letter, and it's gonna say something to the equivalency of the letter you got back in twenty-twenty or worse.
That's what I thought. Just making that clear.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't think the school board wants no money today. It just wanna commit, and we can work on that a little later.
Timmy, anything? Okay. The, the way that I understand it, we need three separate votes. The first vote being what I'd call the cash on hand, the one point five million. The second vote would be on the tipping fees, and then the, the third one would be on the inspection fees. Is that correct, Mr. Carter?
Well, I just wanna clarify, if, if, not that I disagree with what you're saying, but when we get to the cash, one point five, I think if the board is wanting to then explore and, and proceed with the process with the LGC for any additional consideration of funding, I think that should be included in the one point five million. If the board just wants to say, "Here's one point five million dollars and that's all we're doing," you have to, I think you need to explain what you want to do with that one point five. Either include the comments about proceeding with the LGC and submitting all the applications and getting all that compiled, or just a flat one point five.
Understand.
Hey, I have a, I have a question for the county attorney. I believe you made a statement that this board could not obligate a future board. We have to take action. So we cannot complete this. If we go to the LGC and start the process, it will not be completed before the new board takes its seat in one December.
You're correct.
So that rules that out.
Well, you could apply, but that doesn't mean that it's been approved. So, you, you go through the process with the LGC, and then at the time that they come back and they say, "Yes, we've approved you to borrow" whatever amount of money it is, then the board will have to consider that. You know, and in this process, obviously, there would be bank considerations, um, and the amount of money that, you know, would be paid for interest and what a loan would look like. I mean, there's a lot that's gonna happen within that process. But when you get to the end of it and there is an approval, and now you know how you're gonna proceed, then it comes back to the board and now it has to be voted on again. So, no, you cannot vote on that at this time. That will come later with a different board.
But you can make a motion if the board chooses to appropriate the funds and begin the process. Now, if the process is finished by the end of November, the sitting board can make that determination. If not, the new board will have the information before them, and they'll make that decision.
I understand, but why should we go through the effort? The possibility that the new board can say no. That possibility is out there. I will bet you that the snowball will stay complete in Hades before that will happen, but that is a possibility. We have one point five million dollars. It has been allocated. We, we've identified it. We don't have to borrow anything. And I am of the opinion that if there's any borrowing gonna be done in initiation of the process, that the new board should make it.
I agree with that to some extent, but I think that we should leave that option open to get the LGC process started. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt anything to go ahead and start the LGC process, and it might help move things along.
Timmy?
I agree.
So, we're looking, the way that I understand it, we're looking for a motion for the approval of one point five million dollars and following the process with the LGC commission to go ahead with the project. with the project. Is that a fair statement?
That's the board's desire, that is a fair statement.
Make a motion that we approve the 1.5 million funding and go, go through with the application process with the LGC.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries, you were up. Motion carries four to one, thank you. The next, just a minute. Next item would be a motion on waiving or putting a cap on the transfer facilities of $100,000. So moved.
Thank you.
Have a motion in the second. Is any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh, thank you. And thirdly, we need a motion on suspending or forgiving the inspection fees, which are just a shade under half a million dollars?
I wouldn't put a number on it. I would just identify all inspection fees if that's what the board so desires.
Need a motion to suspend the inspection fees on the, the new high school project?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Daniel, you okay?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh, thank you. That concludes the general business for action. Next is county manager's comments. Mr. Carter?
I think I've said enough today, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Thank you. County commissioners, start with Michelle today.
I think this is a positive move in the right direction, and I think we can get this project off the, off the ground and going soon, because county needs us.
Thank you. John?
I think population is aware of my feelings in this regard, and I have no further comments.
Timmy?
No, I, like Michael, I think I've said enough today, so I'm good.
And great. Okay. I, I would like to thank everybody for attending today. I think it was a productive meeting, and again, I would like to thank the Board of Education, the administration, for these few meetings that we've had here in the last few weeks. I look forward to this project getting started someday, and the quicker the better. With that being said, I will go ahead and close this meeting at this time. Thank you all.